You can't perp out.
Good afternoon. How we doing today?
We're good.
We're trying to get home.
Yeah? I'm Officer Lindquist with the Salisbury Police Department. The reason I'm stopping you, there's a few reasons, okay?
Whatever.
Okay.
We need a tip.
Okay. Well, you were called in as a reckless driver.
What?
Yeah. You were called in as a reckless driver. And while I'm following you, you're going 50 into 35 on Ennis. And you're swerving in and out of traffic, man.
No, I did not do that.
So you're on camera, yes you did.
Well, well, this camera on me.
Need your driver's license, registration? Tip. Thank you. Where you guys coming from today?
Uh... Calhoun. Morgan.
Morgan Ridge? What is that? I'm not from Rowan County. I'd...
You're not?
No. Mr. Pierce, you still live at St. John's Drive?
I do.
Okay. So what's Morgan Ridge?
John Morgan Ridge.
This is right, the place is there.
Yeah? Okay, so you guys went and got dinner?
Yeah.
Okay. Cool, cool. Did you have anything to drink at dinner?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How many?
Two glasses of wine.
Two glasses of wine?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else?
Nothing.
How big were the glasses?
That big. Sounds like a... Two or three. Yeah, but whatever it was.
So they were that big?
They... They were that big.
Okay. Just the two glasses of wine?
We were there for it.
Okay. Okay. What kind of benefit?
It was... Children's...
Okay. So only the glasses of wine, no beer, no mixed drinks, nothing like that?
They don't have mixed drinks.
Okay. And how long ago was that, the wine?
Two or... Two... Two or three o'clock.
Two or three o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay. I understand that. But I'm asking these questions just based on your driving that I saw, you know, everything else, and I caught a whiff as soon as you rolled the window down, so that's why I'm asking these questions, okay? I have a job I have to do.
Yes, sir.
So...
I appreciate it.
On a, uh... On a scale of zero to 10, zero being sober, 10 being the just most drunk you've ever been in your life, way back in your heyday college days, where would you fall on the scale?
Uh, at a two.
You're at a two right now?
Yeah. Because I don't... I don't drink that.
Do you think you should be driving if you're at a two?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm out there to donate money.
He doesn't like your driving.
She can't drive this way.
Okay. All right.
I hate her. It's a poor shame. I got Angie. She's driving home. Driving to the market.
Okay. You have a, uh... You have the car in park, yes? All right. Say the vehicle don't go anywhere and I'll be right back with you, okay? 77 David Rowan, 10:32 mil one routine. Also 11 David.
Go ahead.
Hey, sir. Do you mind rolling out this way? Uh, I've got a county commissioner stopped and he may be 55. Just would like a supervisor on scene.
Get four around.
NCDMV. NCDMV.
77 David, about it.
Ten more.
Ten more. Get four to road.
Ten more.
(phone rings) Very good, David. Show me around the 77. Stay a little.
This 4-year-old female is attacking her son. Hit him in the right ear just a second.
That's all good. I'm in the ground.
Seven.
1521 Rowan.
1521.
Show me in route 13.
Ten four.
All right, David, seven. Seven.
I'm 10-4.
25 fifteen. Good. I don't know if I can drive. Ten four.
I think that's wrong, isn't it?
Hello.
Come on. All right, so I'm gonna have you step out real quick and come on back to my car and have a, uh... Talk with me. Push him on. See if he had any... Whoa. Make sure he doesn't fall, okay? Hang tight with this officer, okay?
Okay.
You said your name's Melissa?
Yes, sir.
You're his wife? Okay, cool. You can tell me to shove off if you would like, but I'm gonna ask you point blank, how much he really had to drink tonight? Is this, uh... Is this... Is this slow lethargic speech and not being able to find the door handle, is that normal for him? Okay. Because you also seem to agree with me about his driving whenever, uh... He's trying to argue that he wasn't weaving in and out of traffic and he was going at a high rate of speed. I had to get up to 65 to catch him. Through downtown. Hang tight for me. I'm gonna try and get this settled. I... I have a job I have to do. I can't... All right, sir. What I would like to do is I would like you to perform some tests for me determining your ability to drive.
I can't because my feet, you know, my feet aren't...
Okay. That's fine, we can work around that, okay?
That's fine, I give it a try.
Okay. Are you willing to perform some tests for me?
Absolutely.
Okay. Without, first off, without looking at your watch, okay? What time do you think it is right now?
About six o'clock.
About six o'clock?
Yeah.
Uh, you know what day of the week it is?
Yeah. Friday.
It's Friday?
So, whatever it is. I work tired, so I don't know what day it is.
I under...
I'm a county commissioner now.
I understand that feeling. I understand that feeling. I was a, uh... A raft guide in my previous life and I didn't keep track of days either. Uh... Okay, so, uh... You know what street you're on right now?
Yes, sir.
Which street is that?
Well, I don't know which street it is because I never...
The one we're pulled on to?
It's, uh...
So, I understand you don't know the side street that we're parked on right now. Do you know what the, uh... The main street is behind us?
Yeah, sure. Ennis Street.
It's Ennis Street?
What I call Ennis Street.
Okay. All right, do you know what section of town you're in right now?
Yeah, that's it. South of South.
Okay. All right. Do you have any problems with your eyes?
Uh, shoot. Other than, uh... I had a stroke in my eye. It don't work like it used to. It's okay.
How long ago was the stroke?
Uh, a year ago.
A year ago? I'm sorry to hear that.
Yeah.
So you had a stroke about a year ago? Uh... What do you mean by your eyes don't exactly work right?
Well, when I wake up in the morning, they're not exactly where they used to be.
Okay.
When I wake up, I don't feel my balance like I used to.
Right.
But, yeah, that's part of me getting old. We're getting old.
Got that.
You're young, guy, you don't understand what's life is. It's hard.
Do you, uh... Wear glasses?
Yes, sir.
No? Do you wear contacts?
I wear... For vision. Place.
So like reading?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you wear, uh... Contacts at all?
Yes, sir.
All right. Here's what I'm gonna have you do, okay?
Okay.
You see the tip of my pin where I'm bouncing my finger up and down?
I do.
Look up where I'm bouncing my finger up.
Okay.
I want you to keep your head straight.
Okay.
Look straight at me. I want you to follow the tip of that pin with your eyes and your eyes only.
I will.
Are you able to do that?
Yes, sir.
And keep your head still. Look up here at the top though, not down here, up here.
Up here.
There you go. Follow the pin with your eyes, okay?
I will.
You're not following me.
What?
You're not following me. You're looking at me, I want you to follow the pin, okay? You're looking over here, I'll show you where you're going.
I'll look.
Bring your head back up, your head's starting to kind of drip on me, okay? I want you to look straight at me. Follow the pin, okay? I'm not trying to trick you, it's gonna go up this time, okay? I still want you to keep your chin level. But I want you to follow with your eyes, but it is going up, okay?
Okay.
Don't want you to think I'm trying to pull a fast one on you. Hold on one second, I'll be right back, okay? 77 David, 42 David. Can you bring me your P and T? Mine's still on the fritz.
Okay, we need to get a... You need to get that, uh... Kevin, three.
10-4, absolutely.
Do you need this car yet?
No.
I mean, you gotta do what you gotta do. I'm... I...
I just wanted somebody here to give me time for you to get here, that's it. So I'll get him to clear. Um... He's likely coming.
Okay, that's fine, you do your job. Uh, I wanna get...
Yeah, absolutely. Um, there is... I don't know if he's briefed or not, there is one occupant in the car, it's his wife. Situational, I didn't know if he told you that.
This car?
Yeah. 32. You're good. All right. Uh... Stand up as straight for me as you can, okay? Can you ever do that?
Yes, sir. I feel like I'm good at this.
Can you stand with your feet together, is that possible?
I can. But... So the shit about... You know? Say it as best I can, you'll see the person, right? Okay. Do what you gotta do.
Okay. We're on an incline, do we need to find a flat piece of ground?
Yeah.
You're kind of stumbling downhill on it.
I'm gonna say this about...
Okay, we're gonna walk up to the stop, uh... To the sidewalk then, okay?
Well...
I don't want you to fall.
My question is, what do you do to me?
We are going through tests determining your ability to drive, which you said you were willing to do.
I get that, but what I'm trying to tell you is... Say it as nice as I can, uh...
Well, let's get up here to the flat and then you can say it as nice as you can, okay?
Let's go up here. I've got orthotics in my...
I understand, that's why I've got my hand behind you so you don't fall.
Well, I'm... Actually, I can walk with my hands.
Okay.
My... You know, my thing is...
Do you need to take a breath?
No.
Okay.
It's not about that. My orthotics don't allow me to walk straight.
Yeah, I understand that, I'm not asking you to walk straight, okay? Can we come to the flat?
It won't matter. It won't matter. Let me tell you, my... My feet are just so...
I understand, I'm not gonna ask you to walk once we get up here, I just want you on a flat surface.
Okay.
I... I... I understand, I'm taking that into account.
My wife gonna tell you something that you need to understand. If you don't give me a situation where she can... You heard the... I thought she... They're gonna sue your ass.
Okay.
And I'm gonna sue your ass and sue your ass and your job and your job.
I'm sure you will. Been told that by a lot of people.
I promise you.
So...
I promise you.
Are you... Are you fairly comfortable standing there like that?
Not really. I'm... I'm just vibrating right now. I can't even stand to shout. That's what I've got.
All right. Then I'll tell you what, we won't do this test standing up, we'll have you sit back on my push bumper so you're sitting down, how's that?
That'd be great.
All right. I'm just gonna hold on to your arm so you don't fall on me, okay?
You need to, because I'm... She would tell you I can't walk.
I know she has and you've told me, I understand, and I'm taking that into account. I'm not judging you on your walking.
I'm telling you. I'm gonna tell you something now.
What else you gonna tell me?
What I'm gonna tell you is this. I'm not doing anything that the dangerous insist. I can't.
Okay. Well, you're driving, the reason I pulled you over, we'll beg to differ on that one.
Uh...
You were li... You were riding double lanes, bud.
Because the guy in front of him.
There wasn't nobody in front of him.
Oh. I'm not gonna argue with you.
Okay, good. So what I want you to do, I want you to sit there just like that, as straight as you can.
Okay.
When I tell you to, you're gonna lean your head back, just like this. And you're gonna close your eyes.
Okay.
And then you are gonna estimate the passage of 30 seconds. Okay? Do you understand that?
I do.
Okay. When you feel that 30 seconds has gone by, you're gonna open your eyes, you're gonna tilt your head forward, and you're gonna verbally say, "Stop."
And what does that do?
It is a test to help me determine your ability to drive.
What does that do?
Sir, are you willing to do the test or not?
Yes, sir.
Cool.
I am.
All right. Go ahead and tilt your head back. Close your eyes. You may begin.
Close your eyes, honey.
What you doing?
What?
What you doing?
You what? No, I'm...
The man. Melissa? Miss Melissa? Please have a seat back in the car. Thank you. Okay, that's fine. Uh... So I didn't ask you to lean back on my car, okay? All I wanted to do is tilt your head back, are you able to do that?
What I'm able to do is to take your jab and your...
Okay, I'm...
Okay.
Are you able to tilt your head back without leaning all the way back on my car?
I don't think so because, uh... You're down the path so far right. And I'm gonna make sure that my lawyer makes sure you're out and you're asked to.
I'm sure. Sergeant Brown. He's Sergeant Brown and I'm Officer Lindquist.
Well, good. Cause about your rear total circumstances.
We're 10-4. So... Go ahead, tilt your head back for me, just like you had it when you began the test.
No.
Okay. Are you willing to continue my tests?
I am to.
Well, you can tell me no, but I'm gonna have to make a decision based on what I've seen.
Well, there'll be names in the...
Okay. But you're not gonna tilt your head back?
I will. You need to.
All right. Please tilt your head back. Just your head, not your whole body, just your head. Look up at the sky. I'm sure.
I'm sure too.
Look up at the sky. If you're not able to, I understand, and we'll move on.
I'm just moving on.
To a different test, since you clearly aren't gonna try and do this one. Sit up, I've got you. All right. Look straight ahead at me.
Yes, sir.
You see my finger?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What I'm gonna do for this test, I'm gonna get kind of close to your face, but I'm not gonna touch your face, I promise you that. I'm gonna go around in a circle twice with my finger. I want you to follow it with your eyes. I'm then gonna come in towards the bridge of your mouth. Again, I want you to follow it with your eyes. Feel like your eyes need to cross, just let them cross. Does that make sense?
You say so.
Say yes or no, does that make sense?
Yes, whatever it is.
Do you understand my instructions?
Whatever he says.
Do you understand my instructions?
Whatever he says.
Yes or no, do you understand my instructions? Thank you, that wasn't so hard. Look at my finger.
How was that?
Not following, follow the finger, please. All right, go ahead and blink a couple times. Thank you. One more time. Follow the finger, please. Okay, go ahead and look that out a couple times. All right. Are you able to sit there without having your arms for support?
Yes.
Good. Go ahead, take your hands, put them out like that. Follow them up into a fist, but please do not hit me.
No. I won't do that.
Okay. Why?
Because Kevin told me not to do that, I gotta rest.
Kevin told you not to do what?
Put my hands where I can...
This is a test, I'm gonna have you point your fingers at me and bring them down just like that.
No.
Okay?
I'll call Kevin right now.
Are you willing to provide a breath sample for me?
A breath sample?
A breath sample.
Yeah.
Okay, cool, as soon as the officer gets here, cause my instrument is broken, as soon as he gets here, we'll have you provide a breath sample.
In the meantime, I'm.
No, you're gonna sit right there.
No, no, you can't stop me from calling.
Yes, I can.
No, you cannot.
Yes, I can.
No, you cannot.
You are detained on a traffic stop, I can keep you from getting in your car.
Let me tell you more about sheriff, and you're gonna get your ass.
I don't work for the sheriff, sir. Sir, you sit down, or you're getting handcuffed right now, that's that.
You, you touch me again, and I'm gonna have your ass.
Sit down.
Stop touching me right now.
Sit down.
Stop your, stop you. But, but you don't understand, he doesn't have a right to touch me.
Okay, okay, what do you call it?
Quiet.
Cause you're being detained.
Well, well, well.
Have a seat.
My point then, you motherfuckers aren't gonna get on me, and you're not gonna stop me, call the sheriff.
You can call the sheriff as much as you want to, and our business is completed, but for right now, you're gonna sit right there.
Well, there, there you go. And I'm gonna stop that shit too.
Okay.
Okay, see that tag right there?
Yes, I do.
See that tag right there? I'm gonna stop your ass from doing anything else.
I'm sure.
Uh, you, you better be sure, I'm gonna stop your ass from doing anything, I'm giving it to my sister. Now, they're right.
Seventy-seven, forty-two, what's your twenty? Ten-nine, you're in the. Have a seat, right now.
If you push me one more time.
Have a seat.
If you push me one more time.
If you don't have a seat, you're going into handcuffs, that's the only way this is working.
If you don't push me one more time.
Have a seat.
I will have your ass dropped.
I'm sure, have a seat.
You guys are a joke. You guys are a fucking joke. You guys are a fucking joke. This is what you guys live for, being a goddamn stopper. Let me, let me tell you something.
Go ahead, tell me something, where did he say his?
Right.
Good.
My sister's gonna get on me and take care of it.
Mm-hmm.
And this is not taking care of it.
Okay.
This is doing a goddamn stopper.
Okay.
I'm gonna tell you something right now, I won't tell you shit right now.
That's fine.
Well, see that tag?
Mm-hmm.
That's a tag, so you don't have nothing to do.
Okay.
You, you're such a damn prick. I promise you.
I've been nothing but polite to you till you quit listening.
No, you've been all polite till the fact that I read you two months of the book.
Can you, I, I'm sorry, I did not understand a word you just said, can I repeat that?
You did everything until I did politely with two months of the book.
Correct, you quit listening to instructions.
No, 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 I didn't, I did. What you want to say. This guy's here. Good guy. You're a prick.
Yeah, he's on words.
Oh, it's alright, yes, yes.
No.
Sir.
You don't have any straws. Marks, you don't have any straws.
You got straws?
No.
Let me get you a straw?
Do you have one here?
Is that me gonna get you one?
No, we kinda, we're running out of time here. Give me a sec. You don't have one laying in your car somewhere?
You just wasting it all?
Yeah, well, well, I can, I've got some medical issues.
Dispatch, fuck me. I looked at eleven, so I'd say this is a new thing, so I'm like.
That's where the call came out.
Oh, they got one.
Shit. Neither one of us have any damn straws, I've got a number seventy-two, but I'm playing on you. You can wait for us to get a straw, we can do that, or? No, I know he's pretty, I know he's pretty hot.
Whatever you need to do, whatever you need to do.
Alright.
Where can you get a straw from?
The PD's the only place, that's, that's why I'm like, we, we need, I don't know, we have that kinda time.
I want you to do everything the right way, can you go, gonna do without doing that, or, or you do what you?
Yes, I can.
You do your job.
I can, I'm just with the, without the walk and turn and one leg stand, I'm just trying to build a better case, but I've, I've got it all day long.
Okay, you do your job. You wanna have one of those?
Nah. Alright, Ms. Melissa. Well, I want you to listen to me, okay? He's gonna be placed under arrest for driving while impaired. I'm sorry, but he is impaired, in my professional opinion. I'm just letting you know that, okay? You good to drive? Okay, assuming he drops the whole, I'm a Gestapo prick, and he'll have my badge and my job and all that, well, assuming he does, and he's pol- and he's, and he's polite and.
That's not him, that's not him.
Okay, 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 assuming he's polite and cooperative from here on out, uh, the magistrate would probably give him a written promise to appear in court. Assuming he's, you know, polite, and also he has a sober driver to come pick him up. Uh, if you are wanting, if you would like to, you can follow us to the police department, you can serve as a witness for the breath test and everything else, it's up to you. Why's that? He may end up calling you as a witness anyways. Okay, if that's how you wanna, if that's what you wanna do, that's fine, I'm not gonna make you come, I'm just, I was giving you that option, I'm trying to be as cur- trying to be as courteous. I don't know, the last thing he told me was I was a prick, and that he's gonna have my job, so. Um, I'm just, I'm sorry, he's just too impaired to drive, so. Uh, I'm sorry, some, the person that called this in been following you from innocent news, um. Yeah, so. Alright, um, I'm gonna go handle this and place him in cuffs, um, just. If you'll be, if you can help calm him down a little bit, that would be very helpful. Alright, Ms. Pierce, here's the deal. Unfortunately, I believe you made a mistake tonight, I believe you had too much to drink before driving, based on all the evidence that I have collected. So I'm gonna place you under arrest for driving while impaired. If you are going to be polite and cooperative with me, I will allow you to have your handcuffs in the front, it'll be much more comfortable for you.
It don't matter to me.
Okay, put your hand, put your hands out just like that.
Whatever. I guess you need to stop speaking.
So, your green hands up, on a double lock key, so they don't close on you, I'm correct, or is?
Whatever.
Alright, so as long as you continue to be polite and cooperative, what'll happen is, magistrate may give you a written promise to appear in court, as long as she shows up, uh, with her driver's license to sign for you, and take you home, okay?
What the fuck happened? Just do whatever he says, he's being a prick about this whole thing. Just whatever, he's gonna take care of this shit.
I'm gonna clean out my front seat, sit right there for just a second, and we'll get out of here. Real quick, do you have any medical issues like COPD, cause it's hard for you to breathe or anything like that?
Only thing I have is.
Blood pressure and you're off the end seat.
Okay, you okay? Alright, come back over here.
Nope.
Come back over here. Right here. Have a seat. Alright, you have anything that causes you hard to breathe?
No, no, no.
Cool.
The only thing I have is you as a dickhead.
Okay, have a seat, right there.
I thought you'd go put it in front?
When I clean it out. Alright, now we're going to the muckle, come on.
Uh, no, you're not.
Yes.
Easy, easy, easy.
Don't get. Say one damn thing, he's got you.
Go ahead and face this door, if you have anything in your pockets, it's gonna poke me, stick me, stab me, blow me up.
Not other than my cock.
Okay, very colorful.
Yeah. Oh, the legacy, this bastard.
Yeah, pull him, he's gonna trip over him.
How long have you been with Push Park?
Three and a half years.
Well, you, you shit going on.
I'm sure it is, let's go.
It is.
I'll explain to you in just a second. Face away from me for me, that way. Thank you. Does he have a phone in the car or anything like that?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, do you think he would like that to come with us?
Hmm, probably, but.
Okay, do you mind getting that for me?
Yeah. There's your phone.
Alright, that's gonna come with us, um.
Will it be home stayed?
No, no, it's going with him, so, if you wanna come to the police department, you can, or you can meet us at the magistrate's office, it's up to you, do you know where both of those are?
I do.
Okay.
I do, but.
It'll take us a little bit to get to the magistrate's office, about an hour, okay? So when we get there, um, magistrate, go through his thing, he'll either give him a bond or a written promise, if he gives him a written promise, you'll be able to sign for him with your license and take him home.
Gotcha.
Okay. I do apologize for these unfortunate circumstances, but. Do you need to say anything to him before you leave?
Okay.
The phone's going right here. Is this too cold for you, or, uh?
I'm fine.
Okay. Alright, if, uh, if you need me to turn the AC down or anything like that, just let me know, okay?
Yeah, we're good.
I like it cold, so.
Whatever you wanna do.
We've been having one heck of a heatwave, haven't we?
Whatever. How long, how long?
How many times? Three and a half years.
Okay, so it's all going in?
They're gonna have any charges, uh, for it here, she's under, she's been held at detention center.
Let you know it's all going in here.
Okay, everything comes soon in.
Yeah, it does. Or we have something stupid. So, these violations are here. That's what's up here, all this bullshit. You guys don't take care of what matters, you just take care of what you want to.
Fifteen ten, right?
Fifty nine.
Code four, shimmer, that's crossing there.
Fifty two, ten four.
Fifteen eighteen, really?
Fifteen eighteen.
Alright, you wish for me around fifteen fifteen?
Two.
Face away from me that way. Alright, go ahead and step on out. I've got you as best I can.
Good. Where are the wheels?
I need to help your foot a little bit.
I don't know, it's just... It's on my shrug, it's just what it is.
Go ahead and scoot out just a little bit so that left foot gets on the ground.
Let it get down, and I don't know, that's gonna be where it needs to be.
I've got you, don't worry.
I don't know.
Don't worry.
Okay.
Alright, take a minute, just get steady.
It's hard for me to get steady.
I understand, that's why I'm, I'm just holding you so you can stand there for a second, just so you can get steady, okay?
Okay.
You good?
I'm good right now.
Alright, we're gonna come over here to this brown door, okay? I've got you. Oop, there we go.
Tell you, I don't have...
I understand, I understand, I've gotta hold up you, don't worry. Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, take your time, we're going to the second door on your right. Second door, next one, one more, one more.
One, second.
Yeah, one more.
I got the control.
There we go. We're gonna come this way. Keep walking, keep walking. Alright, there's a black chair right there, okay?
Right there?
Go ahead, have a seat. I'm gonna take these handcuffs off of you, you gonna be polite and cooperative with me?
Yeah, I'm gonna. Where am I going? I can't walk.
I didn't think you were gonna go anywhere. But for some reason, whenever people get in this room, that's when they think that they can fight, for some reason, and I don't know why.
I'm not fighting nothing, I'm just done.
Mr. Pierce?
What?
I have to read this to you, okay? It's kind of important, so you might wanna listen to me. And if you would like to read along, there's a copy on the wall behind you. And, and, I'm, I'm going to, and you're gonna get copies of everything when we're done, okay? You've been charged with an implied consent offense. Under the implied consent law, you can refuse any test, but your driver's license will be revoked for one year, could be revoked for a longer period of time under certain circumstances, and an officer can compel you to be tested under other laws. The test results or the fact that your refusal will be admissible in evidence at trial. Your driving privilege will be revoked immediately for at least thirty days if you refuse any test, or the test result is point zero eight or more, point zero four or more if you are driving a commercial vehicle, or point zero one or more if you are under the age of twenty-one. After you are released, you may seek your own test in addition to this test. You may call an attorney for advice and select a witness to view the testing procedures remaining after the witness arrives, but the testing may not be delayed for these perps as long as you're in thirty minutes from the time you're notified of these rights. You must take the test at the end of thirty minutes even if you have not contacted an attorney or your witness has not arrived. And it is the twenty-seventh. Seven thirty-eight. Would you like to call a witness to come watch you take this test?
Nope.
Okay. If you don't mind, I've made an X right there. If you would, sign that. You are simply signing that I just read that to you, and like I said, you get copies of everything once we are done.
I know.
You may use this glass partition for a backdrop if you need to. Alright, so here's what's gonna happen. I have to observe you by law for fifteen minutes, okay? That is to ensure that you don't eat, drink, smoke, whatever. I, I, it's the law. After that fifteen minutes, I'm going to start the instrument. It goes through a little nineties dial-up boot-up process. After that, I'm gonna say, it's gonna sound kinda formal, but I'm gonna say, "I now request a chemical analysis of your breath, please take a deep breath and blow," okay?
Well, can I have some water or drink?
I cannot let you drink anything right now.
I'm thirsty, say it.
That's part of the fifteen-minute thing, okay?
Yes, sir, call my lawyer.
Once we're done here...
Call my lawyer.
I'm not gonna call your lawyer. Are you saying you would like to call a witness now?
I'm saying call my lawyer. That, that, you know, let me drink some water.
I will once we are done with testing.
Call my lawyer.
Once we're done with the test...
Let me tell you something, you don't know who you're messing with. Call my lawyer, right now, right now. You put me under a strip. Okay, I'll call him right now. Yeah, it's not what you wanted here, I know.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me.
No, I, I don't give a shit what you think. I have legal rights and you, you guys are like, well, we'll just bypass that shit. No. Hell no, you're not going to. I'm gonna make some shit on you, you ain't never seen.
I'm sure.
I'm, you, blah, blah, blah. You're sure? You ain't seen nothing. Or some bullshit, that's what it's all about, some bullshit. Hanging down your whose life? Nobody. Nobody. What you guys like, oh, my God, we got a commission, we're gonna screw his ass up. I wanna see what happens. Next time, you want some time to do something. Then I'll call your lawyer.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes, sir.
I want you to listen to me about something real quick, okay?
Okay, just whatever you want to say.
Okay, I'm trying to be polite with you, okay?
I, I understand, but I'm trying to be polite with you.
Okay, I'm trying to be polite with you, okay? Here, here, here's, here's the deal, okay?
Okay.
In the state of North Carolina, I have to observe you for fifteen minutes. During that fifteen minutes, you're not allowed to eat, drink, smoke, whatever. So if you would like some water, I'll be willing to get you some water, but it's gonna take us a lot longer to get out of here because then I have to start over my observation period. So it's up to you, would you like a drink of water or would you like to get this done quickly?
Well, at the end of the day, you're not gonna do this quickly because I'm gonna make sure that my state senator perhaps calls you and tells you to let me go.
Okay, so do you want to... You didn't answer my question, do you want me to restart my observation period? Or would you like to...
What am I doing that you need?
If you take a drink of water, I have to restart my observation period.
Okay, well, let me just call my state senator.
So would you like a drink of water and this take longer than I would like?
Yeah, I'm just coughing.
Okay.
We'll just hand this shit right in.
Seventy-seven, David, on two.
Well, whatever you need to do, man, I don't care.
Can you vise my ten seventy-two time, please?
You don't understand what I do for you guys. You don't understand what I've done for you guys.
Ten four, thank you.
You're gonna understand what I'm saying. And I would give you guys so much money to take their things that you don't even... I mean, you wanna mess with me by driving home? Are you kidding me right now?
How much you weigh, sir?
One eighty-two.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello? Well, I don't know what you're gonna do when you get here because you're still gotta be, you know, accustomed or whatever. Who's my, who's your wife? Okay. All right, well, you get here, uh, call Senator Ford and let him know that... Yeah, call, well, call Senator Ford and then arrest these guys' ass real quick, so... Okay, I'm, I'm being quiet, you know, I'm saying that, all right, bye. Appreciate what you guys do, try to take care of Salisbury because it's a damn time of...
Thank you, sir.
I really do, and I appreciate what you're doing.
Well, thank you, means a lot.
It's bullshit, you're gonna have one of them, no, I appreciate it. I wish you had dug the earth and shit, but what about... Now, taxpayer's pay. You do what you gotta do.
Okay.
And now I'll do what I gotta do. And this time, I'm gonna do that. I called Kevin, I asked him, I said, "What's going on?" He said, "Yeah, I'll do what I want you to do." I said, "I'll take care of you, man." The big bitch, she said, "Well, I'll take care of you, Craig, don't worry about it." I said, "I'm not gonna worry about it. This is all bullshit anyway, just somebody wants to get paid. That's what it's all about." See, that's what you don't understand, you, you think you're doing your job. Oh, you're doing, you're doing something to get paid.
Who's getting paid?
The police officer.
Huh. I don't get any of that, so it doesn't really affect me.
I appreciate that, that's why I'm not doing that shit. It's whatever you want to do. But at the end of the day, this is all bullshit. What criminal have you put in jail?
I haven't put anybody in jail. Like I told you, as long as your wife shows up to sign for you and you're polite and cooperative, you don't go to jail tonight, you get a written promise.
Uh, I'm not ever going to jail, I promise you.
I didn't say you were.
My point being is what have you accomplished tonight?
Arrested somebody that was impaired driving.
Oh, okay, and what did that do? Save the citizens? No, no damn thing.
Okay.
You think the rest of me is gonna be something that takes everything else away? No, you need to go out here and dress, bless these goddiggers, you need to go out here and dress these people, they're selling fentanyl. That's what you need to be doing, not worrying about me. And that's what bothers me, is you, you really think you've done something? You done a damn thing? You not done a damn thing? But, 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 you know, I'm gonna write a check, it's over. What, what lives did you save tonight? Nothing. Nothing. You need to think about that. What lives did you save? Nothing. Nothing. So all this has been about what? So you could fill out a report, get a check? Make a difference. You, you need to do that, you need to do what you swore to do, is to make these people in this county or in, in this city safe. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to criticize you, I'm trying to tell you, this is your opportunity to make things better. You can do like me, take whatever hell, I don't give a damn. I've got more money than you've ever seen in your life.
Well, that's probably right.
But, but my point being, you know, people put their, their... God, I'm like, you don't understand. People put their security in you, in you as a person. So you really think the rest of me is gonna be a big thing in your life? No. It's nothing compared to what you should do. I'm not a fentanyl addict.
This time, I request chemical analysis of your breath. Please take a deep breath and blow until I tell you to stop. Put this tube in your mouth, take a deep breath and blow, 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 you gotta blow harder than that.
There you are. What the hell have you done?
So you need to put the mouthpiece in your mouth.
I did.
And take a big, deep breath, you need to blow hard until I tell you to stop. No, you didn't. It rejected your sample because you didn't blow.
Okay, what the hell is it? The point being is, you, you're somebody that people depend on you to take care of them. I'm not somebody that's gonna be a criminal. Okay? You need to understand something. Citizens of Salisbury, Roan County, who the hell ever are depending on you to take care of, take care of the criminals. Am I a criminal?
Put the instrument or the mouthpiece in your mouth, deep breath and blow. Blow hard until I tell you to stop, blow, 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 keep going, you're backing off your pressure. You can't back off your pressure, nice, steady breath. If you back off your pressure, we have to keep on doing this.
I've never done this, so I don't know.
I understand, I understand.
I don't know what the fuck you're doing.
I understand, that's why I'm telling you. The mouthpiece goes in your mouth, take a deep breath before you put it in your mouth.
Okay.
And blow. Just like that, until I tell you to stop.
Okay, so then somebody comes up on crime scene, and you're like, uh, pull your gun, and they're like, uh, I'm gonna pull my gun, kill him. See, that's, that's the disparity that I have. You're, you're hired to defend these citizens and I am. And, and you're not doing that. You're worried about me. Are you fucking kidding me? This is your life, this is what you depend on? And we got people getting killed every day in our goddamn, in our cities? Oh, God almighty. This is, this is what you do?
Deep breath and blow until I tell you to stop. Blow, 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 keep going, 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 you stopped. You can't stop.
This is what you do? This is what you're doing up in town, citizen?
Mr. Pierce, you're doing very good on that one, but you stopped, okay, you can't stop, okay, you need to keep blowing.
I blew as hard as I could, I mean, damn. Let me tell you something. You're disappointed in me.
I'm sorry to hear that.
And, 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 I, I, I mean, you're Salisbury Police Department, I don't have nothing to do with Salisbury Police Department. But if, if I lived in the city of Salisbury and you were, God's gonna protect me, I'd be like, oh, fuck, what am I doing? When I called the sheriff, I'm gonna tell him, look, you guys are gonna do like...
All right, we gotta reset this up, we timed out.
Okay, whatever the fuck, whatever the fuck.
Until I tell you to stop. Until I tell you to stop. As I said, that last one was, had a very good promise, but you stopped too soon.
Too soon, I really don't recall it.
Okay, well, no, I never told you to stop.
Let me say this.
Okay. Well, it's gonna take a couple of minutes for it to set back up for some reason.
My responsibility was to take care of my citizens. You know, I've been disappointed with Salisbury for a long, long time.
I'm sorry to hear that.
I am too, because it doesn't need to be that way. And I must say, you're one of those situations, but I'm simply saying that you guys, you need, you need to step up. All of them need to step up. If the best time was spent trying to pull somebody over, I think you guys have lost your focus. You, you may disagree, and that's okay. But I'm six, sixty-six years old, and I'm like, you know what? You won't look at me because, because you know you're wrong.
No, I'm just letting you talk.
Well, you, you know you're wrong.
Okay.
Because this, I've got a lot of years above, above you, and I've seen what happened in this county. Thing that pisses me off the most is you guys don't give a damn anymore. You just wanna go through your procedures. And there it is. I'm not blaming you personally, I'm just saying, your directives that's being given to you is just do what you gotta do, eat your pain, go home. And that's not where I'm at with my county. And, and I don't know what you feel, I don't care, because you're gonna feel what you wanna feel. But I grew up in this county, I've lived in this county my whole life. I know everybody that lives here, I know every family that lives here. And I promise you one thing, I'd never do anything to hurt this county. And I'm, and just saying, I'm not saying that you're trying to hurt this county, I'm just trying to say that you aren't protecting the things that are gonna make this county run and prosper. And you do what you gotta do, because you're, that's your job, yeah, I'm, I'm good with that, I'm, I'm good with that, I don't care. But just understand, this is not about me not caring about this county. This is not about me caring for Salisbury. This is all about me caring about the, the people that live. You know, you put me in handcuffs, you said a whole bunch.
Deep breath and blow until I tell you to stop.
Okay.
Blow, 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 don't back off, don't back off, don't back off, you're backing off.
I've only got so much breath.
That's why I told you, you need to take the biggest, deepest breath you can.
Man.
Biggest, deepest breath you can.
If you have a stroke out there...
You told me one.
One that they can identify, three that they said is, is, is gonna happen.
Okay.
So I, I can only give you what I've got.
You told me roadside, you had no problem doing it.
I, I did, because I thought it was gonna be a simple...
No, we need a big, so what it needs is it, it's called a deep lung sample, which means you need to take a big...
This is my thing, I've never done this shit before, so...
I didn't say you have.
So I don't know what you want?
Big, deep breath, the biggest breath you can muster, and blow until I tell you to stop.
Okay. All right, give me everything I've got, man. I'm to the point I'm about ready to sleep.
Deep breath and blow. Biggest breath you can. Blow, 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 blow. So you, you let out three quarters of your breath before you even put the mouthpiece in your mouth.
No, I did not, I, but, don't argue with me.
I'm not arguing you, I'm telling you.
I'm just trying to tell you, I can't do more than I've got in my...
Okay, so this time, take the big, deep breath you just did. But do not... And then put the mouthpiece in your mouth.
What am I blowing right now?
You're not, it's not taking a sample because you're not providing an adequate sample.
I'm sorry, but, but I've never done this before, I don't know what you want.
I've told you, the biggest, deepest breath you can, put the mouthpiece in your mouth, and let it all into the tube.
Okay.
Until I tell you to stop.
Okay, I'm trying my best to cooperate.
I understand, I can see that. If you back off your pressure, it's gonna reject it. Big, deep breath. Blow, 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 and then you backed off again.
I did not, I blew till I was out of breath. Did I say you call my attorney later to come up here?
That's not gonna affect anything.
Okay, I'm just asking. I said he's the county attorney, and I'll promise you it'll break your ass up to toast. How'd that come out?
It didn't, you didn't provide a sample.
What? This is bullshit. This is bullshit right here.
You can't cheat the instrument.
Let me tell you something, if you don't let me out, my ass out here now, I'm gonna sue this damn county.
That's not gonna happen.
Well, it, it will, it will sue this damn county.
Okay, we're gonna set it up one more time, I'm gonna give you one more good chance to, uh, provide a sample, and then we're gonna go from there.
I can give you all I can give you, you sitting here watching it.
I'm watching you try and cheat it.
No, I'm not trying to cheat a damn thing, I'm blowing all I can blow. You guys are just waiting for some shit to happen. We explain to them that we don't get this crap.
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Pierce, here's the deal.
Hey, come in here and watch this shit.
He's been watching.
I've blown five or six times, I don't know what is the other...
So, Mr. Pierce, if we don't get a good enough sample, it goes down as a refusal because I do not...
I'm not refusing to do a damn thing, I've done it.
Will you please let me finish talking?
No, sir, I won't.
Okay.
I want my attorney, if you're gonna do this shit one more time. And I promise you, the attorney I'm gonna bring in here is gonna break, break your ass. Okay, so give me one more time, and I'm ready to go home. I'm not so sure this shit's rigged, after what you've told me.
It's absolutely impossible.
Uh, I don't know that.
Would you like to explain it? Since he doesn't wanna let me talk.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes, sir.
Okay, he's gonna, uh, ask you to blow one more time, and if, and if you don't get a good enough breath sample, the next time he'll have to get a surgeon to draw blood.
Well, draw the blood, that's fine.
I just wanted to explain to you what the next step was.
Draw the blood.
If you can get a good, long, steady, strong blow.
This is bullshit, right here, 'cause I've blown, I should've been home two hours ago.
Yes, sir.
And, and I, it's not like I'm not cooperating.
Yes, sir. You are cooperating, just need a good, long, steady, strong breath.
I did that, 'cause, like I told him, I said, "I've had a stroke, I don't have the breath," you know?
Yes, sir, I understand.
Stuff that he wants, I'm, I'm blowing as hard as I can. So what, what am I supposed to do?
Well, he's gonna try it again, Mr. Pierce, and if this doesn't work, then...
Take me to the hospital, that's fine.
Okay.
That's good.
Okay.
I'm fine with it.
Yes, sir.
But I'm gonna tell you something, if you be a witness, come in here and tell me.
Listen.
You guys need to understand one damn thing, as a county commissioner, you guys keep fucking with me, and I will defund your shit like you ain't never seen.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna tell you that right now, 'cause I can do that. I've always been a proponent, with Mike Caskin, running for sheriff, I've liked, "Mike, you tell me whatever you need to do, but I won't tell him, if these guys keep screwing with me, I'll take care of funding all of this shit." So just know, I'm not trying to tell you that I won't take care of you guys, but I've always been a proponent to take care of your funding.
Yes, sir.
And if he wants, if they wanna keep fucking with me, well, that's okay, that shit will go away. I've already called Senator Ford, and he's done talked, he's done texted me, "You tell me what you need." And we'll be like, "What, we need this to take away the funding?" So, you guys keep messing with me, and you, you guys will get what you need to get, which is nothing. And I'm not trying to be evil, but if this is what people go through, well, fuck that noise. So you go ahead and do what you gotta do, okay? And you go ahead and do what you gotta do.
Yes, sir.
I'm not telling you how to do your job, I'm just telling you, uh, make sure that you want to have the funding to do your job, this is what you're gonna treat people.
Alright.
Alright.
Big, deep breath and blow till I tell you to stop. Blow, 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 and stop, that was perfect.
Thank you.
We have to do one more, just like that. North Carolina is a two-state, a two-test state, so you provide two samples, the low...
Can I stick one up my ass?
The lower of the two readings is what's admissible in court. That was absolutely perfect.
That happens, it quickly can get out of your lungs.
That was absolutely perfect.
What was the legal?
What's the legal limit to drive in North Carolina? Do you know that?
.08.
Okay, you just blew a .27.
Okay.
That's three times the legal limit to drive.
What? That's bullshit.
Yeah, that's math.
Whatever you wanna do.
So it has to get rid of that sample that you just gave us, so that the next one isn't contaminated. After that, I'll ask you to blow again. That was absolutely perfect.
That's bullshit.
Unfortunately, North Carolina is a two-test state, so...
Well, I only had two glasses of wine, I don't know what the fuck is this for. It's alright, y'all do what y'all wanna do. There's nothing in the state that's... But, I'm saying, honestly, it's perfect, man. You got a damn democratic fucker. You got it? Just a prick.
Never actually met him, have you?
I have.
Yeah?
Yeah, I told it to his face, you're a dick. That's what I thought.
That's awesome.
I said, "I wish you, I wish the fuck you'd go away."
Whether you like him or not, that's awesome.
Well, now, I'm, I'm one of those kind of people that...
Get right to the point, don't you?
No, I'm, I don't give a shit about letting him wreck. I'm like, this is how I feel. When the people elect me, they let me, they say what they want. Well, I told him, I said, "You're a dick breath."
Alright, Mr. Pierce, big, deep breath, just like that last time, and blow it just as hard for as long. Blow, 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 don't back off, come on, blow, 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 you backed off, you backed off.
I did not, I was blowing out of breath.
I understand. Uh, I saw that, since you didn't take that big, big, big breath right beforehand. I need you to take that really big breath, okay?
What does it matter? You're convicting anyway, compared to... You know, it's just sad, or, I did nothing wrong, I was just going armed with my pride. We went to a fundraiser about homeless children.
You told me.
And I was like, "Really?"
I meant to ask you earlier, what kind of meal they serve there?
Uh, chicken fingers.
Chicken finger?
And you had to pay for one of them, I was like, "Okay."
That's not exactly what you expect at a, uh, at a benefit dinner.
No, not when you pay $500 on the table.
Oh, Lord. Alright, big, deep breath and blow. Take that big, deep breath. Blow, 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 and stop, very good, that was perfect.
Good.
As long as those are within a zero-two agreement of each other, we are done.
Whatever, it's gonna be what's gonna be.
Okay.
By my point, you get it, I'm not, I'm not a bad person, I'm just trying to take care of it.
Mr. Pierce, I don't think you're a bad person. I think you made a mistake tonight, and that one was a .26, just so you know.
Whatever it is, it's what it is.
There was a trashcan in here, some of it, ah, thank you, sorry.
But you think, with all the shit that I go through, that I get a little respect about what I'm doing?
I feel like we've been very respectful to you, sir.
You what?
I said, "I feel like we've been very respectful to you, sir."
Well, you have, I tell you, handcuffs.
Well, unfortunately, when you're under arrest, you do have to go in handcuffs, that's policy, I can't, I don't, I don't have any say over that, sir. But he said you were. All I saw was you were driving in Pecos, sir, that's it. You like to hunt?
I used to, but my dad died.
You seem like a, uh, you remind me of a guy that I, uh, was neighbors with, he's a retired dentist in Randolph County, he, uh, he was a big bird hunter, were you a bird hunter?
I was, I used to hunt, uh, doves.
Yeah, you seem like the type.
And then my dad died seven years ago.
I'm sorry.
I built a house in that, but they don't marry the hunter, either.
Okay.
Because there's too many bears, and then bobcats, and wild turkeys, and I get that.
Yeah.
But, uh...
I'm a deer hunter myself, but I, I also have, uh, two bird dogs, I've got two German short-haired pointers
Okay.
that I train to, uh, train to be quail dogs.
Well, my thing was, my dad was a beagle dog.
Okay, so rabbit hunter?
Yeah, my grandpa used to have eighty acres
Yeah.
in Cleveland, and they would have people that would come in from all points of the state, you know, would come in and hunt. All over the place, I was like, "Yeah."
Yeah.
And they would just generally stand on the edge of the field in the middle.
Yeah.
Bird, or the dogs are running, rabbits to the end.
My, uh, my dad tells me a story, I never knew the man, but tells me a story of his, uh, his uncle, is either uncle or great uncle, had, was a beagle guy.
Okay.
They went out rabbit hunting one day. They went out rabbit hunting one day, and, uh, the, they didn't see anything all day long, and they were walking on the trail home, and there's a rabbit in the, uh, in the trail right in front of them, the dog never saw it. According to my father, my, uh, great uncle got out his pistol and shot the dog right then and there.
Well...
'Cause he said he wasn't no use to him.
They would really run these dogs, and there would be like seventy, eighty rabbits come out.
Yeah.
And they would just shoot them at, at the end, and then skin them all out, boil them up, eat them, whatever.
Okay.
That was back in the sixties.
Yeah.
That was a time...
Hunting sure was a lot easier back then.
It was not like it is today. The biggest thing that people don't realize where Frank Island is today was one of the biggest dove hunting fields that's ever been.
Okay.
I'd go out there with my dad in living, it was like, you'd shoot sixty, seventy you know, dove, you know, in a day.
Yeah.
Per person.
Oh, wow.
But, uh, it's not that way anymore. So this county's changed a bunch, and I'm trying to make sure that it hasn't changed to the bad side.
Yeah, I'm from Randolph County, I don't...
Okay, cool.
I grew up in, uh, do you know where Swain County is?
Yes, I do.
That's where I grew up.
Okay.
And, uh, that's where I was a whitewater raft guide, and I was also a fly fishing guide up there, yes, for about five years.
We have a house that we built up in Lower...
Okay.
Uh, John's River.
Yes.
Everybody's down there rafting, fishing, you know?
I was a, I was a fly fishing guide for five years.
Okay, so you know what I'm talking about?
Absolutely.
But, uh, now, we, uh, we go up there on the weekends with my grandson, when he's here. You know, take him up there and go rafting and to whatever. You know, it is what it is.
Yeah. Yeah, I wish they had wild, uh, I wish they had wild quail here in North Carolina, but it's very rare sighting finding anymore.
I was gonna say, they ain't near around anymore.
Mm-mm. No, the Bob White is all but extinct in a while.
Yeah, we, my dad used to have dogs and hunt quail, and we'd go out and shoot them, but, uh, that was fifty years ago.
I also, I love some pheasant hunting.
Well, I've never seen a pheasant raft.
Oh, man, me either, I usually have to go to the preserves, but I've been wild pheasant hunting out west
Well...
in, uh, South Dakota.
Up, up on the mountain, we have a lot of wild turkeys.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, they're everywhere.
My, my, neighbor took a picture of, you know, a male, and they had like fifteen guys, and it was like this stuff.
Yeah. So, Mr. Pierce, here's what happens next, okay? We gotta go into the room next door. And I gotta take a picture, and I gotta get some information from you, your personal information.
Okay.
And then take some, uh, fingerprints.
Oh, I've, I've done many fingerprints, I haven't tried to...
Well, un, unfortunately, you have to be fingerprinted.
Again?
Yes.
Alright, whatever.
Once we're done with that, we'll go to the magistrate's office, where, uh, I'll present my case to the magistrate, magistrate will more than likely see if it give you a written promise to appear.
Whatever, who?
And you'll go home with your wife, okay?
Alright, whatever.
So...
I'm not mad at you, I don't think we're so good at you, so...
Well, we can agree to disagree on that, but I'm glad you're not mad at me.
I'm not mad at you.
I'm going...
You're doing your job.
Do you want me to, uh, make sure you don't fall?
I'm fine.
Okay, as long as you're fine.
I'm fine.
I'm gonna be right behind you if you need me, to your left? Yes, sir.
Okay.
And have a seat in one of these black chairs.
Okay.
What are you doing? I'm talking to him, I'm sorry.
Oh, go sleep. Moody, I don't know if you're dealing with, it's Quan Moody?
No.
He's, I think Mark's just doing something with the handcuffs.
Cool.
Too tight, you need this right now?
Well, I mean, so I can get out of here.
Well, if you got...
Um... Yeah, let me use this real quick.
Can you hold this there?
Oh, bless you, my son. Mr. Pierce, what's your, uh, you said you were born here in Rowan County?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Pierce, you said you still live at the St. John's Drive?
Last time I walked, walked by, I lived there.
Okay.
Yeah, the last time you lived, you were there, I do it, too, right? I like those ladies, they're a little better than I like them.
Turn it for me, Mr. Moody.
Yes, sir.
I'll get, I'll get it. You get it, don't worry.
Yeah, I ain't bothering nobody, though.
Yeah, you get it.
I'm good, I need a damn soda. You'll get a soda, baby, I'll get it.
Soda, I can't get you a soda, I need some water, yeah, water, we're, we're speaking.
That's alright, can I get you a soda?
Well, I'll let you smoke one before we go to jail.
I know what I'm saying.
Alright. Just grab everything, grab everything out of your pockets.
Well, you know, it sticks.
How tall are you, Mr. Pierce?
Uh, six foot.
Six foot?
Yeah, I'm six, you know, eight.
You born here?
Yeah, you, you're nine and six.
We'll color your eyes, sir.
Yeah, we're gonna...
Right, Tom.
Right.
I feel kinda anxious, man.
Say, can I sit on one of these?
Well, you're on me.
You understand?
Okay.
I have a parking.
Okay, I would, but it's on the walk street.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would run it on the walk street, you got it, again?
Yeah, so we'll talk to the magistrate, and the magistrate will give you a bond, okay?
I will, yeah. Somebody, I want my money to be...
I don't have a idea, man.
Yeah, I don't have my phone, man. Yeah, I don't see my phone, man, dude, yeah, my money's stuck.
Mr. Pierce? I have to get one photo up here, so if you would.
Okay.
I'm gonna help you stand up.
I'm fine.
Alright, that whiteboard right there, stand with you, back to that whiteboard, and there's a sign, it's up above my head, and it says, "Look at the sign." I need you to look at that sign, and don't move, okay? Look up.
It's not what they do to Myrtle Beach, they were like...
Myrtle Beach?
Yeah, thirty years ago.
Ah, uh, turn and face this wall.
Soda, we got a fountain.
What the hell ever.
Of water.
What happened to Myrtle Beach?
I got caught for consuming alcohol.
Ah, you done? Were you a minor?
I don't know, it's thirty-five years, huh?
Alright, have a seat here in this black chair. Once that officer there gets out of my way, we'll get you some fingerprints. Love you, buddy.
Love you too.
Oh, I love you too, I was telling him I love him, but I love you too.
Yeah, yeah, keep it clean, man. Hey, give me a soda for it, man, I don't know damn much, spray, fuck it.
What's the matter, you don't like spray?
If you need to drink, I'll pay for it, and I appreciate it.
We don't have any sodas, man.
Come on, man. Yeah, you drink some kind of drink, eh? I appreciate, I appreciate it, huh?
Well, if you need something, I'll take care of it.
Yeah, you got it, you gonna pay for a bond, too?
You what?
What? I didn't even understand what you just said, huh?
Goddamn right.
I don't think I need to have a problem getting out of here.
I'm talking about me.
Yeah, well...
I think he's asking you to post his bond. I think he's asking you to post his bond.
Well, I can't.
Y'all think shit again, I'm a dead ass.
What did I say?
Shit, I'm a dead ass, bro. Hey, bro, don't that shit too, eh? I'm a dead ass. Yeah, I ain't bothering nobody.
What you in here for?
Oh, I was driving charge, D W R.
Me too, I'm like, are you fucking?
Hey, you got it.
I'm like, are you fucking kidding me right now?
Hey, you see it right there? Damn, what the hell took you in there like?
I don't know what the post is about, I'm just.
You like, you rich as hell, but you got the money giving people.
Well.
Fuck it.
Well, at the end of the day.
Hey, give it, yeah, they gonna give you a real problem coming at you. I been running for this shit for like two years, goddamn.
Hey, Saint Quan, can you step on trip on this, I'm gonna take a picture.
Alright, yeah, you know, hey, you got the bread, that bread.
Huh?
I'm trying to figure out, what's my bond y'all at?
We gotta go to magistrate's office.
Oh, really, I know that.
Jesus.
Hey, what we getting, that bread?
Alright. Ready to get some fingerprints done, sir?
Hey, let me do that one.
So we can get out of here. Just come, just stand up here on this black X right here.
One of them I'm gonna do now.
So, you see this camera right here? Alright, I need you to look at that. This one is very, very sensitive, so I need you to stand as still as you can, okay?
Okay.
Alright, you good, you good to have a seat right there for me?
Alright, and you gonna face that way.
Okay.
Let me get one of the waters, though.
Alright, come right up here on this black X, sorry. Still face that way, though. I'm, I'm just trying to get you in the, the angle.
You got, uh, you got it, though. Eh, that guy's a bitch, you better tell him too.
Sorry, you moved to the last second, I'm sorry about that.
You want some water, hear me?
Yeah, I was trying to do a little.
I don't have a cup or anything, you just gotta.
Yeah, but, uh.
You, you're doing fine, I just need you to stand there. Uh, you moved to look at him real quick and it obscured the camera.
I'm sorry.
You're fine, you're fine. Alright. We're doing pictures, now we're doing fingerprints. You can go ahead and stand here, you don't need to be on the X, I need both your thumbs. Right there.
Y'all got this already, 'cause I got a damn passport.
We have to do it every time you're arrested. No, no, put them back, put them back.
Put them back, okay.
That was a bad scan.
Oh, okay. I wanna tell you, I killed twelve people.
We're gonna leave them out there. Alright, give me the four fingers on your, or, hold on. Now, four fingers on your right hand, only your right, only your right.
Ain't no water in it?
Thanks, sir. Come on. Technology sucks. Right thumb, right thumb, you, we're gonna do your right hand.
I thought we did that already.
No, we gotta do each individual finger, okay? Just let me roll it, okay?
Whatever you, just whatever you need.
Right, no, no, let me roll it, okay?
Whatever you want.
What's your ring, hold on, hold on. What's your ring, if you don't mind me asking?
This is my father's. Prayer.
Okay.
You know it too, though.
He have a gun.
I need four fingers on your left hand.
Okay.
Alright, left hand.
Why, took y'all so long to come get me anyway?
I don't want someone, somebody to hold me. You're just, I guess you were sleeping out there or something?
Yeah, I wasn't bothering nobody that way, just chilling, you know? Damn, damn, hurry up, come get me. I was like that.
Uh, if you don't mind, have a seat in that chair.
I wasn't bothering nobody.
Oh, you weren't, you were good, man. Yeah, you were good. I'm gonna tell the magistrate, you were cooperative and everything, okay?
Yes, sir, I appreciate you, yeah.
Whenever they're done, we're gonna knock out some fingerprints and get up out of here, alright?
Yes, sir.
Alright, right hand.
I thought we did that.
Gotta do your palm prints.
Oh.
It's a funny story, okay? I had this, I had this girl one night. I had a girl one night that I arrested and we got to this part and she, uh, saw her palm print, she goes, "Shit, I can't kill anybody now." And I said, "What do you mean?" And she, uh, she, she looked at me and she said, "I watch a lot of like CSI and Twenty Twenty and all that." And on those shows, they always say they identify the killer with a partial palm print and I always thought that was bullshit, but it ain't bullshit.
It's true, dead ass.
Yep, dead ass. And I was like, you know, it's kinda worrying that that's the, that's the first thing you think of when you get fingerprinted. Is, uh, how you can't kill any, you can't kill anybody now.
Hey, he's got a present, bro. Got a business, dude, I say.
Thank you, sir, if you would, if you would.
So you'll know.
Mr. Pierce.
This shit is not.
It's just serious, man.
It's not.
Ain't no game.
Ain't no, they're, I'm the county commissioner, they're fucking with me, so.
Yeah, you a commissioner?
Yeah, yeah, so, so you'll know.
If you would, sign in this box, you're simply signing that those were your fingerprints and I'm the one who just took them. No, no, right here, right here, right here.
Because they said I was drunk. I was drinking too much after going to a damn.
I'm sorry, you just hit reset, sign it one more time. Don't hit, don't hit that button though, right here.
Because I, oh, I'm sorry, because I was going somewhere.
I know you too, brother.
Alright, that's it, thank you, sir.
You're commissioner of, of Philly?
Uh, yeah, and I was going to a damn place where they were giving them money.
I'll donate, yeah.
Yeah.
A donation, boy.
Yeah, I damn.
What day you back to live for?
Uh, today, anyway, they thought I was too fucked up.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So. It is, just so you're aware, it's not.
It's gonna print off your. It's gonna print off your fingerprints.
Damn, you got to sit on your sleeve.
It's not about, it's not about.
Man, you a good man.
But they don't care, it's all about everybody getting fucked up.
Damn, they got a lot of guys, I'm just having a try to.
I'm not upset with, I'm not upset with these guys, these guys are doing their job. I'm just saying, you know. Whenever I gave them ten thousand dollars today, but that didn't matter because.
Ten thousand dollars?
Yeah.
For God almighty?
Because it was a benefit.
I guess I had to borrow some money from somebody, didn't I?
But they're doing their job.
Yeah, damn.
Well, well, that is what it is.
Goddamn money.
That is what it is.
That's fucked up.
You know, these guys are doing their job.
You don't bother nobody, though. He didn't have his kids out.
I'm trying to take care of kids that are abused.
And now, they, we covered them, man, you don't do that, fucking those, you know what I'm saying?
So next year, when they call me, I'm gonna be like, huh, I'm not gonna do that.
Hey, be honest, eh, man.
Cause I'm such a criminal.
My little kid right here, he gonna.
I'm a criminal, driving home, whatever, man.
Goddamn right, you got that, you got that tag on you, man.
I did such a terrible thing to drive home, man.
Alright, Mr. Pierce?
Yes, sir.
We're ready to go to the mags, I have to put you back in handcuffs, go back and call, okay?
Whatever you gotta do, I don't give a damn.
Okay, change, I like that, like that, like your praying. Like your praying.
Nah, you know, I gotta talk to the police.
I just want you to know, when you talk to your other people, this is what happens when you try to do something.
Somebody got killed, well, I'm not saying, bro.
Well, you know, these guys are doing their job.
Hey, you got it, we know.
At some point in time, you have to say, "Really?"
Alright, Mr. Pierce, T F. Very good, sir. Don't push the door, I need to pull my pants. Yes, you do.
I can't do that with my pants.
I got you, don't worry.
It's cause I got these little elastic waist shit on, and I thank you, sir.
Absolutely, I mean, I ain't gonna make you walk around with your pants down.
Like I said, I'm not blaming you guys, you're doing your job, I understand.
I ain't gonna make you walk around with your pants down. That's indignity.
Thank you, sir.
Is that good enough?
That's good.
Okay, okay. Well, good, good news is we only got a part to go.
Good. Where we going? Right, right here?
Yep, same car we came in.
I don't, I couldn't tell you, okay?
Let me, uh, you got your phone in your pocket?
Uh, this is in my backpack.
Oh, okay. I'll tell you what, I'm gonna put this right here so you don't sit on it.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Easy does it. There you go.
Thank you.
Alright. Face away from me again?
Yep.
Face that way. Sorry, I'm just paranoid about people spitting on me or biting me. I'm not saying you would, I'm just, I know, I'm just, I'm paranoid about it.
Okay, have, have, have it caused you a bunch of shit.
Well, we got off to a rocky start, Mr. Pierce, but you've been very pleasant for about the past hour.
Yeah, well, you know, say it in a nice way, I thought this was all bullshit to start with.
I understand that.
And I think you would appreciate my position.
Yes, sir. So, like I told you, okay? I do not think you are a bad person, sir, uh, not at all. I think you simply made a mistake by driving tonight, that's it. And if, if you wanna disagree, that's fine, I'm just telling you what I think.
I'm not gonna disagree with that, but I had six other people that I said, "Look, let me, let me take you guys home," which I did. And maybe that was my mistake, but at least those people got home without drinking, but they were drinking without driving after drinking. My biggest concern is my wife, because she's, she's just.
I understand, she was very, uh, she was very pleasant out there on the scene too, uh, and she was very understanding.
She got her stand.
You're not gonna be able to reach it, I don't think, uh, get it to you as soon as we get to the mags office, okay?
Well, something's coming through right now. Yeah, my wife was a school teacher thirty years.
Oh, yeah?
Yep.
Oh, you did reach it pretty good.
Being a county commissioner for the last ten years, we've paid our dues, as I like to say.
Okay.
But it's a good thing I'm not running again, 'cause this, this right here will ruin it.
I've seen and heard of people bouncing back from a lot worse.
Uh, I don't give a shit, I don't want to be a county commissioner anymore.
You don't like it?
I don't like the board I'm having to work with.
Okay.
If I could get some shit.
Yeah.
But I, I'm not gonna say this. This is what not I signed, this is not what I signed up for, okay? I'm gonna leave it at that.
Okay, fair enough.
And, uh, if I had been able to do what I wanted to do, things would be a whole lot different.
Yeah.
But, you know, it is what it is. Or maybe this will be the only thing worrying about what's going on.
Well, I wish you all the luck in the world.
Well, it all ended today, today, so whatever. If it makes you feel any better, this ain't the first time I've had handcuffs on, okay?
Okay. You said Myrtle Beach, right?
Myrtle Beach and Salisbury. I got arrested at seventeen years old for spontaneous rag, rag racing.
Really?
Yeah, so I mean.
Okay, so you liked to go fast when you were younger?
Uh, I like to go fast now.
I noticed.
So it ain't like, you know, but, you know, say it in a nice way, it didn't have the consequences it does now.
Yeah. Well, Mr. Pierce, you can think of me what you will, you can think of what I'm doing tonight, what you will.
Look, it's your job.
Here, here's what I'm gonna tell you, last thing, okay? Um, let's not meet like this again.
Uh, you won't.
I would love to meet you on the street in, you know, regular settings anytime, so.
You know.
But let's not meet like this again, okay?
I did this for a charity the day, they, uh, were doing for abused women, abused kids down at Morgan Ridge. And I told my wife, I said, "Look, I'm not driving my Cadillac convertible, it's conspicuous vehicle." She said, "Okay, I understand that." But we were down there for three hours and I said, you know, and Amy Bowden, who owns Morgan Ridge, I said, "She's my friend, I wanna support her." And they were like, "Well," you know? So several people were there with us at the table. And I told them, I said, "Look, I said, "This is, uh, time to go home." Long before the ban ended. But never deal, it's too late. So it is what it is. It's a damn shame if you wanna give people money and you get locked up, so.
I'm gonna come around and get you out.
Okay.
Oh, hold on, I gotta, I gotta, yeah, I gotta get your seatbelt off first, sir.
That's all I'm saying. Hey, I'm at the magistrate's office, which you know where that is, can you, can you hear me? Do what? Can you hear me?
I think she's actually two cars over, sir.
Okay, well, I'm at the magistrate's office, just come get me. Okay, alright, bye.
Just because we're going in the mags, I have to hold on to this.
Okay, that's fine. Let me know what we need to do.
You got it?
Well, I got no rock through my feet, I can't feel nothing.
Yes, sir, I understand.
So, so just help me a little bit.
Absolutely, I'm here.
I'm serious, I can't feel nothing. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are your pants good?
Nope, they're falling down again.
Alright, well, hold on, I'll, I'll pull them up if you'll.
If you'll, like I said, my feet are just like.
If we both don't go.
Pull them up. Thank you, sir.
Is that good? Hold on, hold on, don't go walking off. I don't, I really don't want you to have an accident and fall in the parking lot, sir.
I don't either, problem.
Alright, we're gonna walk over here to these yellow poles, sir.
Yellow poles?
Yes, sir.
They have us there.
Uh, the magistrate will see us on the camera and open the gate for us.
Okay. Who's the magistrate's not?
That one I don't know. Hang tight.
There's my bride.
I see her.
She's inside.
Alright, we're gonna walk through the gate, sir.
Okay. Oh, this gate?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's the front entrance for the public. In order to see the magistrate, you gotta come around here.
Okay, pants are falling down, but I got them.
You got them?
I got them with my hands.
Okay, as long as you got them, sir.
Yes, sir.
If you need me to grab them again, let me know.
No, I'm good right now.
Okay.
This is custom.
I want you to listen to me, okay? There's a step down right here, be very, very careful.
Okay.
Watch the steps, sir.
I will.
Alright, and we're gonna have a seat on this bench to your right.
Okay.
And we're gonna wait our turn for the magistrate, okay? And we're gonna wait our turn for the magistrate, okay?